Oh, nice. I love that thing. It's the best thing ever. Yeah, best thing ever. Yeah, that thing, I, I love it. I absolutely love it. Well, it'll dehumidify the whole thing. Yeah, it's fabulous. Hey, Jordan or Norma Jean, how, how can I make it? So that what these poor people on Zoom, all they don't see is me? No, but all they see is me.
Well, they're not going to be, they're not going to be able to see us because what we don't.
They're not in. Well, it's too bad I couldn't put the livestream on here. No, but I'm talking about why couldn't I share my screen and have it be the livestream? Right. But then we get feedback like you wouldn't believe. What's that? Just spread out. You're three feet to five feet. Right. Well, I can share, I can share.
If I can get away from people out there on Zoom to make sure you can hear me. I don't see anybody waving. Can people out on Zoom hear me? Okay, I see some nods. Okay, thank you. We're going to call this meeting to order. It is a couple of minutes past 6:30. I'd like to open this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So for those in the room, please join me.
Hey, Bob, I think you're pretty faint.
Okay, I'll see what I can do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think just real quick if you don't mind, Bob.
No.
So for those of you out on the Zoom, the best way to hear this is to log into the livestream, which I posted a link and I'll do it again in the chat. But other than that, for public comment, we'll take it here.
Okay. Are there any agenda adjustments? Maybe, maybe you can hear me better now? Are there any agenda adjustments?
I have none.
And I have none. We'll move on to 2.1, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 29th, 2020 Board of Directors organizational meeting. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any comments, corrections? Seeing none, then all those in favor. We do have three board members that are on Zoom. If we can have each of them, let us know.
All right.
How they vote.
Andrea?
Approved.
Okay, Dory? Dory? You're muted.
Hi, sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Dory.
Okay, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I cannot see any of you.
That's, that's why if you go to the livestream, Dory, that the link's in the chat, you'll be able to see into the room and participate through this function here.
Okay, how do I get to the livestream?
I just, I just posted it in the chat. So do you approve the minute, Dory?
Yes, I have. I've read them and I approved them.
And Joan?
Yeah, I've got them right here.
Joan, how do you vote on the minutes?
Okay.
All right.
We have enough votes to pass it.
Yes. Yep.
Petitions and communications?
I have none this evening.
Okay, move on to superintendent's report.
So most of what I'll talk about is coming later, but at this point, we've been working hard on some planning. The administrative team has been meeting a lot. We've met with ad hoc committees and like I said, we'll take you through all that later on. Other than that, the audit is complete, correct, Scott? Okay. And Scott and I have been working on the coronavirus relief funds application. We got that in this week and it's been approved. So that's good. So all in all, it's been, been a busy few weeks.
Okay. We have one resignation?
Yep, Amy Mayhew, librarian at Cary Ricker.
Okay. Kathy, Director of CAI report. So her comments are everything she has to report is coming up under the discussion of school thing. So we have no other reports tonight?
Nope, none.
Okay. So I want to lay out the next thing we're going to get to is comments from the floor, public comment period. So I let me, for those of you who may have not attended one of our board meetings in the past, it is the, this particular section right here is for members of the public to make comments about the school workings, things in the school. They're not, they're not, you're not entitled to talk derogatorily about a particular staff member or student. Those types of things have to go through the proper chain to keep confidentiality, which is required, but you can talk and comment on school items. Many of you are probably listening in because of the school opening plan, which has its own item. It has been the practice of the board for, I think as long as I've been on the board, to allow the public to speak on items that come up that have have the possibility that public comment would be made. But in doing that, the board is usually sees the presentation, the board asks questions, gives the information that the board needs from the presentation, and then we will allow the community members to make comments or ask questions for a period of time. And it may cause more conversation by the board for follow-up, but then if it's a motion for action, then the board will have to take action. So there's really two things tonight that might do that. One's a discussion of the opening plan. And that is where, once the discussion has been done by the board, we'll open it up for public comments. Anybody that wants to go and speak to what the discussion kind of leads us to will be given that opportunity. Within, within reason, I have to say, if we have 500 people and they're all saying the same thing, we have to kind of keep it short. So it could be a limitation. If somebody's already made the point, making it again might be not necessary, but we're going to, to the most that we can, we're going to allow for public comment. And that's, that's how we try and run our board meetings to allow the public to be involved. Once that's done, then we're going to move into a motion for a reopening plan, which will probably what we resulted in our discussion of what it would be. So it would be basically a motion to approve what had been agreed upon under discussion that we would do. I don't see that there's another opportunity necessary there for more public comment because we have already had that. All right. And then we will continue on whether that's approved or not, then we will continue on with, with the business. I would hope that we do come up with some sort of plan that's agreed upon tonight so that our staff and the community members can begin the planning process and have a kind of a cap on where we're going to go. But as in all things, you never know for sure until it's happened. So that's, that's where we're going to be. So right now, I'd like to open it up for public comments. At this time, I would prefer that the public comments, I can't restrict them, but I would prefer the comments at this time be about something other than our school reopening plan. There's the ability to raise your hand in Zoom?
Or the chat.
Or the chat. So if you would use those tools, we will recognize each person that wants to make a comment.
We do not have anybody at this time.
Okay, so right now, we're not showing anybody raising their hand or in the chat to make a comment under this particular section. I'll give it just another little bit of time because of the technology lag, et cetera, and then we'll move on. Still none?
Not at this point.
Okay, so then we'll move into, we have no old business to discuss tonight. So we're going to new business. So 6.1 is a presentation on the return to school plan. This is the plan that's being recommended by the CPT committee that met based upon all the subcommittee and also following the required requirements that are set forth for us by the Department of Education, both state and nationally. So Kathy, are you going to make the presentation?
We're going to do it together.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to share my screen. For those of you out there in the Zoom, I'm going to share my screen so you can see this, and then when it comes time to comment, I will pull it back. All right, so, so I will start. I, I have to tell you, you know, I, I have. Hold this over just a little bit. Where's that?
Yeah.
All right, so, you know, I, I will say to all of you, my job as, as your superintendent is to advise you on things. In my 17 plus years of education experience, I have never been in a place where I am right now where I don't know what the right answer is. I just don't. And I hate to, I hate to say that, but I think it has to be said. You know, I see a lot of people talking that they know exactly what needs to happen. I, I don't know that. I think the work that you're about to see is good work. I think a lot of work has gone into it. And, but at the end of the day, I can't tell you without a shadow of a doubt, what's going to happen a week from now, what's going to happen a month from now, what's even going to happen tomorrow. But tonight, what your task to do is decide how we're going to reopen. The Department of Education says we have three options, 100% in-person instruction. We, with that, you have, but regardless of what we do for any in-person instruction, there are requirements that the DOE has before we can open. So, so the choices are 100% in-person instruction, a hybrid model where some students are in, some students are out, or 100% remote learning. I can tell you, and I, I will, I will preface this with 100% in-person instruction is not possible in RSU 4 at this time. We just cannot meet the requirements of the DOE, and we'll get to this in the slides, but I think you need to know that going in. And I think, I think the general public needs to hear that. Just the ability, just the physical distancing components alone, we don't have the space to do across the district. And so consequently, we're going to show you a hybrid plan. We also, we've done remote learning. We know how to do it. It needs some tweaks, but we'll talk about that as well. So beyond that, I think Kathy, if you want to start.
Okay, so I'm going to start by talking about the timeline of events that we've been doing all through the summer. So students got out of school on June 5th, and that following Monday, our staff started to do some P E days. And they were tasked to think of some planning scenarios for the fall. And we gave them some different criteria, attendance, engagement, health and safety. And we asked them to give us feedback on three different models, in-person, hybrid and remote. And that information was really valuable for us to make decisions about how this could look and sound like to make sure that opening of school is safe. On the week of June 15th, the DOE gave us our first guidance. Throughout the summer, they have updated it, and we've gotten even a new update this week. The week of June 22nd, we surveyed our families and our stakeholders. We got some information from them, asking for feedback of how did the spring go and some suggestions, concerns, or how they would like to see the reopening look. At that point, we made some ad hoc committees. So the DOE had created their guidance in five different categories. We made four ad hoc committees out of those. Two of them were academic, and so we combined one ad hoc committee to tackle two of those sections. During the week of June 29th through July 17th, the ad hoc committees met and went over the 55-page document that we created based on that DOE guidance. The ad hoc committees examined what our S U 4's capacity was to meet those guidance pieces. They made recommendations to the district collaborative planning team. That team met and went over all of the pieces of the first round of guidance. We updated the board at the beginning or mid-July at that board meeting. And we started our to-do list to make sure that we were prepared to start, no matter if we were in-person, hybrid or remote. By the week of July 27th through August 3rd, the state gave us a green designation. We'll talk a little bit about that. Angie and I, as well as the administrators, have met with some regional teams. We meet with something called W M E C, which is Western Maine Education Collaborative. There are other districts that are rural, that are about our similar size. Do we talk about how can we go about processing and planning and brainstorming and thinking outside the box to make sure we are hitting the criteria? We also meet with the region that our students send on to LRTC, the Lewiston, Auburn, Coleman, Mechanic Falls and such. We also took on the task of calling our parents. We have tried to call all 1,400 students. So I say students, but we really called the family. So if we called the family and they had three students, we only called, we only called once. We were successful for the most part. There are still some unanswered questions. There were some students or families that we did not get a hold of, whether the information was not updated or we couldn't leave a message. We did post on through email and social media for them to contact us with the information, and we did gather some more information from those. So CPT team met last Friday to kind of go over the, this last scenario. For us, as educators, it is a default to know how to teach in person. We're very good at teaching in person. Fortunately for RSU 4, we actually did remote learning pretty well. Our survey results from our families were pretty pleased. Was it the best case scenario? Absolutely not. Is that our preferred way of teaching? Absolutely not. But we actually did a fairly good job. And so it gives us some groundwork is, is done. And so we don't have to throw the baby in the bath water out. We can just tweak some things. For example, our parents didn't want us to do instruction in the afternoon. It was clear that if we were to do remote learning, we would do it in the morning. So all of those things came out of the survey, great feedback. So we feel like as a CPT team that we knew what remote learning could look and sound like as well. So the hybrid tonight that we're presenting is really the gray area. What does that look like? It's a combination. So we're going to kind of spell that out a little bit more, but we have some other criteria that we want to talk about. So there's a lot of talk about the color designation. And I, I just want to be clear that the colors that we're going to get, our first color was July 31st. And if you've been following along, the entire state became green. But the green color is just a recommendation. So as we go throughout the year, if our color in our counties, remember because RSU 4 is part of both Anderson and Kennebec, if those colors change, it is a recommendation for the school to make that move. Green means 100% in-school learning, yellow means a hybrid learning approach, and red means 100% online learning. So if there's a change, then it would be up to the board to determine if RSU 4 would make any adjustments to the plan. So this part is the recommendation part. But the next few pieces that we're going to talk about are the requirements. And so there's a big difference. So if we're talking about color, recommendation, safety requirements are the safety requirements that we need in order to open up for in-person learning.
All right, so to do in-person instruction, the department set set six safety requirements that a school district must meet in order to consider bringing in students for in-person instruction. These, and we're going to go through them here, but I think it's really important that when we talk about the color designation system, it's a recommendation and the recommendation meaning we have to meet these six requirements to meet the recommendation. So let me just move my slide. The first one, symptom screening before coming to school. Okay, so we, we must, A, have all our staff self-check themselves every day before they come to school. So there will, we will have, we're actually exploring an app right now potentially, but we will have at least a Google form that our, our staff have to fill out every day. Our parents will be tasked with running through a symptom checklist as well at home before their students can enter our buses or our buildings. Also with that is we must scan every person's temperature when they walk through the door. And so consequently, you know, I started thinking about how are we going to do that? You know, we, we have, we have school nurses, but they have so much to do, asking them to stand outside the door and scan the forehead of every person that ran through, A, seemed, did not seem like a valuable use of their time to me. And B, what happens when we get somebody with a high temperature and they have to go? That, it, it just didn't make sense, nor did it make sense to take a staff member to do that, partially because of physical distancing requirements and because the reality is to have students in our buildings right now, we're going to need all hands on deck. I cannot, I cannot put staff, take staff out of working with students and working on making sure students have masks, making sure that they are physically distant to scan temperatures. So Glenn and I actually went and demoed some technology. And with the, the coronavirus relief funds, we'll be installing infrared scanners that scan the temperature of every single person that runs, that walks through our door. So the person walks through the door, they look up, they pause for about a half a second, it records a face, it records a temperature. It actually takes the temperature in the corners of the eyes. And I, Glenn can speak to it as well. It's probably one of the most amazing pieces of technology I've ever seen. I, I never, I didn't even know such a thing existed. So those will be mounted. We're using coronavirus relief funds to pay for those. So those are, no, those are not coming out of the general budget. They're actually, the federal government is paying for it. Those will be installed over the course of, then the next two weeks. Yeah, yeah. So those will be in place.
I'd also like for you to point to confirm. It's, it is not doing facial recognition?
No.
If it sees a high temperature, it takes that picture, that image gets sent to the building administrators, the school nurse, so that they can then say, oh yeah, that's little Tammy. And so they can go get Tammy and do the follow-up. So there is no facial recognition?
Nope.
We're not, you know, not maintaining that type of stuff. So want to make sure that that's clear. And so the people that might be concerned about that, as I would be, don't have to worry about it.
That's a great point, Bob. Thank you.
So the second safety requirement is physical distancing, and physical distancing is an important practice that helps mitigate the transmission of the virus. There's no precise threshold for safety, but our studies have shown that physical distancing of three feet or more leads to the reduction of the transmission. So adults must stay six feet away from others while students can maintain three feet distance amongst each other. So this six feet though is required for physical distancing for students while eating breakfast or lunch or where they can't wear a mask, such as outside. We do have adequate, Andy can talk about the ventilation piece that's required for classrooms. But we've worked on grouping our students in one area, classrooms that don't exceed our size limits. So if you want to look at our chart, this is the easiest chart to think about what is our physical distancing. So no, no person, individual student or staff can be zero to three feet. It's not allowed. Three to six feet, everyone, all students and staff must wear a mask. We will have scheduled mask breaks. We just started to talk about that. And over great, or greater than six feet, you, outside as such, we can have the mask break. In our school facilities, we started to remove furniture and materials that are not necessary to make extra room to ensure that our desks could be at least three feet apart. We have ordered and we will be installing Plexiglas for tables and in our office areas in front of our. We have started to work with traffic flow to ensure that certain stairways and hallways are going in one direction. Middle school and high school students will not be using walkers. We will not have gatherings of more than 50 people. It will limit the movement around the building, such as during class time transitions, or we will create pods of students and move the teachers, not the students. As you heard, we will be requiring all students and staff entering a building to wear a mask. If you have a certain medical condition, you can get permission to wear a shield.
Kathy, just for a sec.
Yep.
I think it's really important. I know, I know masks have become some sort of a political thing in the world right at the moment. I, I think it's really important to note that we don't make that call. That is not a call that we made. That is a call that the Department of Education and the state have made. So wearing a mask, being mandatory to do in-person instruction, that isn't a local decision that can be changed. If we do in-person instruction, everyone has to wear a mask for the DOE requirements.
Yeah, so masks and face coverings will be worn also by students on the bus. Face shields may be an alternative for students documented with medical or behavior challenges who aren't able to wear masks or face coverings. This same applies to staff with medical or other health reasons being unable to wear face coverings. Face shields worn in place of face coverings must extend below the chin and back to the ears. And you will notice that there will be more guidance that we will send out for parents about what is an acceptable mask. So one without a ventilator, no gaiters, must have two layers of protection. Those things must cover the nose and the mouth area are all requirements of what constitutes a good face covering. The fourth safety requirement is hand hygiene. All students and staff in the school will receive a training in proper hand hygiene. I will say that this is not something that we do. We've always done this. When it comes to cold and flu, we teach how to cough, how to sneeze and how to wash our hands. However, this is something we typically do in the pre-K 5 world. It's not necessarily something we reinforce on the 612. But it is something that we will continue to train and encourage that we must wash hands or use sanitation gel upon. that we must wash hands or use sanitation gel upon entering the school before and after eating, before or after dawning or removing a face mask, after using the restroom, before and after using the playgrounds or shared equipment, and upon entering or exiting the school bus. Hand washing is the best option, but when we can't, we will use sanitizing gel. We have sanitation, we have sinks with hand soap in all our pre-K5 classrooms. We also have put hand sanitizers in all our classrooms as well and sanitation stations in the common areas, such as building entrances, cafeteria hallways, and such.
All right, so the next thing is personal protective equipment. So we've ordered a ton of it. The state has given us a ton of it, and it's on order. We're, we're ordering it all the time. We will have, we will be providing masks for our staff. We'll have masks on hand for students should they forget them. We will have gowns and gloves for those that need them in certain situations for our nurses. We have face shields. We also will be installing the protective barriers everywhere that we can. And, and like I said, those will be ongoing orders. But we've got, Glenn, we've received an order already, and there's more on the way.
Yeah, we've got about a thousand.
More coming, yeah. And, you know, staff members will get what they need, will have them on hand for students because they have to be worn all the time. The last thing is returning to work after an illness. So one of the things I think is really important to do is if, if we have a confirmed case, we will follow the CDC guidance. So the CDC will tell us what to do. Beyond that, we'll have protocols in place. One of the things is making sure we have isolation rooms in all of our buildings. We have identified where those are. If a student shows symptoms, that's where they have to go. They'll be there with the nurse until they can be picked up. And then they would see their PCP. Our school nurse is our point of contact for our students, and our staff members' PCPs are their point of contact. Beyond that, we have flow charts in place for if there's a COVID-19 symptom identified for our staff. We also have them for students as well. Those are laid out by the CDC. And then there's also protections for our employees under the Families First Coronavirus Act for things such as childcare, if they are caring for someone who has COVID-19 or someone at home and, and other reasons under the law. Scott and I have been working closely with the attorneys to make sure that we follow. These are all new. They got expanded in, I think, April. And so we've been working with Drummond-Woodsom to make sure we're very clear on what that looks like. There's actual, Drummond-Woodsom is putting out flow charts. So that information has been sent to our staff. So the last thing, what is our capacity? So if you remember correctly, there were those six items we just detailed that you have to do to have in-person instruction. Can we symptom screen before coming to school? Yes, we can. I mean, we're, we're relying on lots of people to do that. But we will also be checking temperatures when, when they walk through the door with the technology that we have. Masks and face coverings are a requirement. We'll be providing them if someone doesn't have them, so we can do that. We can teach hand hygiene. We've been doing that for a long time. The CDC has nice videos, and we'll be making some of our own. We have PPP, PPE, excuse me, on, on order and in stock. We'll have more of it than we probably know what to do with by the time school opens. And we've got flow charts and following the CDC guidance for returning to school after an illness. The problem that we run into in RSU4 is physical distancing. We have gone through our buildings, looked at our classrooms. Some of our, you know, our elementary classrooms have anywhere from 18 to 22 students in them. We cannot physically distance in our classrooms three feet apart and put 22 students in a row. It, it's just not possible. We measured, we put desks in. Glenn has actually gone with our building administrators and our head custodians and facilities manager and looked at all of our rooms and measured to figure out, can we align desks? And it just wasn't possible. And so it's that item of physical distancing that took one person 100% in-person instruction off. We just couldn't do it. And I know that there are some school districts out there that are going to attempt it. They, they have different sized classrooms. They may be smaller in numbers. Also, one of the things in talking to my colleagues, they have high rates of students who have either, A, withdrawn to homeschool or are, are choosing a remote learning option. Somewhere upwards of 30 to 40%. But that puts, if we were to do that, it still doesn't, it doesn't, if you were to choose a remote option, it still doesn't mean you couldn't come to school. All of a sudden, we could put ourselves in a situation where we have too many students in the classroom. It's just not possible. So our options. Oh, this was me. So plan number one was in-person learning. Obviously, I've detailed that we just cannot do 100% in-person instruction. The physical distancing is not, not possible. So that leaves us with two options that we have to decide on tonight. Are we going to use a hybrid model? And Kathy's going to talk about what that would look like in RSU4. Or do we go 100% remote instruction? I wish I could tell you what the right call is. I can't. Do I think we can pull off a hybrid plan? Yes, I do. But there are a lot of, there are some pluses and minuses to that that we will get to. We know how to do distance learning. Obviously, we would need some tweaks. We got a lot of good feedback, as Kathy talked about. And so we would make tweaks to that if that's what we do. So, you know, the reality here is this, is we can make the decision to go to a hybrid model and a case, a COVID-19 case shuts us down and we have to go to remote learning. So we're prepared to do that if necessary. But I think the task of the board tonight is really, are we going to attempt a hybrid? Or are we going to do 100% remote instruction? So.
So before we go into that, we definitely wanted to share what our communities recommend and want. And I am sure, as a board member, you have gotten emails, phone calls, and lots of opinions. And we have too. And I will say, it's all over the board. But I wanted to give you the results of our information. So this information is based on our phone calls, which were just done at the end of July, beginning of August. This does not have to do with the survey we did in June. So currently, 64% of our parents want their child to return to school full-time. 7% of our parents want their child to do remote or distant learning. There are 29% of our parents that either are unsure at this time, that they want to see the plan that we have before they decide. Two, we could not reach them, run numbers, can't leave a message. So we're not quite sure which side of the fence they are. We have seen staff members, students, and community members recommending all three models. So we just wanted you to understand that we're not quite sure. When we look at our homeschool numbers, so Andy alluded to that there is some that are doing homeschool. And I'll talk a little bit about what the difference is after about homeschool versus distant learning. We currently have about 40 students, which is actually less than what we've been having the last three years. It doesn't mean that won't change, but we actually have only 40 students at this point. So I will preface this by, when we talked, Andy and I, at a community chat, we had talked about a different type of hybrid model. We talked about our primary in sixth grade and ninth grade coming in full-time and our seventh and eighth grade and 10, 11, 12 possibly being remote, so that parents and students would either be all in or all out. However, once we started getting more guidance from the DOE, we realized between physical distancing, equity issues, and other things that we had to meet in that 55-page document, that hybrid model was not viable. So again, working with what our resources are and our capacity, and also working in the region, we are proposing this hybrid model. So if you look, our, our cohort, our students are going to be split into two cohorts. Cohort A and cohort B. Some students will be coming to school on Monday and Tuesday and doing distant learning on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The cohort B students would be going to school on Thursday, Friday, and it being distant learning on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We'll determine which students will go in cohort A and which ones will go in by B, partially by bus runs and alphabetical. We're also going to make sure we take into account that siblings would be together in cohort of neighborhoods and such as best we can. There is also going to be a cohort C. As an administrative team, we are going to elect to have a school choice. We've created a criteria, a four-point criteria at this point, to identify students that were not successful this past spring that need to be in-person four days a week. There is a huge variety of reasons why students were not successful or can need supports. It's more in-person than in remote. Students in cohort C would be coming four days a week and doing distant learning on Wednesday. The state of Maine has required that we offer a remote learning option, so we are offering a cohort D. That will be a parent choice. So we would be offering material, curriculum, attachment to a teacher, and it would still be considered an RSU4 student. We're calling that program RISE, RSU4 Instruction for Sustained Education. Those students would be going to school at home five days a week. They could elect to come back into any of cohort A or B once they contacted an administrator and make a re-entry plan. There are certainly positives on this hybrid model and some challenges. When we're looking at a hybrid model, it's nice to see kids in buildings. As we said, our teachers do what they do best in person. That's what they were trained to do. That's what they know. And it allows us in a hybrid model to engage all our staff, doing the job that they were trained to do. It allows us to ensure that all our devices are in kids' hands. That is the wonderful thing of RSU4, we're one-to-one. And it would allow us to have our kids have the devices that they need to do learning in the classroom as well as their distant learning. By doing this hybrid model, we're limiting the number of kids in the building at one time, which allows us to meet that physical distancing requirement that we were not able to meet in the full in-person instruction. It allows us to meet all the CDC guidelines in this model. It makes our bus capacity manageable. Kids will be able to access resources that they need, whether it's social, emotional, food, a teacher, a social worker, special ed services. They will be able to build relationships with their, their students, other students, and their staff, and their teachers. And we'd be feeding kids. We are not saying that this is an easy thing. This is a very difficult model because we've never tackled this before. So there's lots of challenges that are ahead if we were to go this approach. If we were to go this way, we need all the staff we can, all hands on deck. If we're dividing kids up, if we're teaching kids in-person and remote, we need to make sure we have our staff. It will be a challenge to feed kids in-person and also remote learning students. There's changes in engagement when you're in-person and also distant learning. So we'll have to come up with some really creative ideas to keep kids engaged. A mask is a challenge. Learning will look different than the spring's distant learning model. We did fairly well, as I mentioned. Our survey results were pretty favorable. However, we know that attendance and accountability and some other measures that we, because it was emergency learning and a plan, we did not hold as a high regard. And we were definitely going to have to make sure we make it a priority. There is this risk that we go to this model and we have to change to remote learning anyway. So it would be a different change for parents, that they would have to get their childcare for three days a week and then go remote, and they'd have to change it to five. This creates more health risks of COVID exposure than if we just went remote learning. Hiring people when we're in and out in different cohorts of people will be a challenge. Every year, we have sub coverage issues. This will be no different. I am working on connecting with our sub list to see what subs are still interested in coming back to RSU4. I don't have that data of numbers yet, but we definitely are still working on that. And we would be remiss to, to miss that. It's a parent's challenge to have three days of their, their children home.
Kathy, if I could just interrupt for a sec. I, I think, I think it's important to note that the staff issue, the staffing is a big issue. It, it just is. I mean, we, we have, we have staff with underlying health conditions. We have staff that have children at home that need childcare. We have staff who have elderly family at home. And, and when Kathy makes the comment, we need all hands on deck. We need all hands on deck. Just to make the bus runs alone, we need all our bus drivers. So, you know, that, I think that in itself for me is the scariest part of this. You know, we lose, you know, I can't, I don't have a number, but we lose enough staff, we'd have to switch to remote learning no matter what. I, I wouldn't, I would not have a choice because I would not have the staff. And, and hiring is a challenge right now. It just is for a host of reasons. So, anyway.
I, I just wanted to really talk about cohort D. There is some misconception about what's the difference between homeschool versus distant learning. For, for parents that are choosing to homeschool, they are ultimately exiting from RSU4 and registering their student with the state. Once they do that, they have to make an educational plan with the state, teach their child, and at the end of the year, have either a state-certified teacher approve their child's portfolio or the child takes an assessment to show that the child has made a year's worth of growth. Versus our cohort D would be our distant learning. This would, this student would remain an RSU4 student. They would continue to receive communications from us. They would be able to still access teachers, curriculum, material, resources, and such. In addition, they would also be able to join in possibly in some of our Zooms so they can still have connections with other students. So there would be a difference between homeschool versus distant learning. In school year 1819, we had about 50 students. 1920, we had about 54. And as I mentioned earlier, we currently have 40 that are registered now.
Right, beyond that, in thinking about a hybrid model, there are a couple other considerations that, that we need to have. First of all, I would recommend if we go through a hybrid model, we shorten school day, student day. The reality here is this, A, masks, if that's a long time to wear a mask. If you, if you think about a kid on a bus, and granted, we'll, we'll build mask breaks in, but I, I wore one recently on Election Day for over 12 hours. It, it is tough. It really is, especially in this heat. So, so looking at the number of, you know, the number of hours a student is in school, not to mention also spending time on the bus, that's a long time for our students and staff to be masked. Also, it would allow our staff time to connect with those that are in distance learning, have office hours, provide feedback, post lessons for the next day, and give them the time they need to do the work they need to do to make this successful. You know, our, our teachers can use all the time they can get. This is, this is, this would be something we've never done before, and they're going to need some time. The other thing I would be recommending is a change to the calendar. And, and this, this can go a couple of different ways. I don't know if you've seen the news lately, but Lewiston and I believe Auburn, Kathy, are looking at starting on, on the 14th of September.
Yeah. Auburn is meeting tonight, actually currently meeting, and they are proposing and looking at their calendar changing to the 14th.
We were looking at starting, starting school on the 8th. I would like to change the calendar at least to then. I, you know, the reality is this, we need all the time we can to prepare. Just, just the fact that supply lines are running short, they are tough right now. I mean, we're, we're getting the things we need, but it, it's, for some of it, it's going to come down to the wire. It, it just is. You know, the PPE is coming in. I mean, the state promised us 7,000 masks. We, we have a load coming from, the National Guard is actually delivering them. So we've got a load coming from the National Guard, the end of this week, early next week. So it'll be interesting to see what we get from them. School districts are starting to receive it. We've ordered a ton more, but getting those things in is proving to, I mean, we have it, but we're always going to need more. We're ordering fans, you know, ventilation fans for our classrooms. Getting those is proving to be difficult. We'll get them, but the timelines are running short. We've ordered signage. We've ordered ways to, to mark the floors so people know which way to walk and enter, just like when we go into Walmart these days, although I try to avoid Walmart if I can. But it's in the sense- Although I try to avoid Walmart if I can, but it's in the necessity in our lives. And so, you know, making sure we've got the correct signage and marking. All of those things are really tough right now to get. And so, we need some more time to make sure our buildings are set up appropriately. And to be quite honest, our teachers, our staff, and our administrators are going to need some time to prepare for a model like this. This is not something that we have ever done. And so to do it and do it well, you know, I've said this before, hope is not a strategy. I hope this works. I really do. I want to see kids in our buildings. But, we need the time to make sure our staff is ready to do that. You know, our teachers, we have amazing teachers. We have amazing administrators, amazing technicians. You name it. Our school counselors are fabulous, but they need time to prepare for this. And so if we could delay the start of the calendar, that would be fantastic. So ultimately, that is what a hybrid model would look like in RSU four. Obviously, remote learning, we've done that. We know how to do it. We would make some tweaks to it, probably hours, the hours that we did it. But ultimately, the decision really now is, do we go with a hybrid model or do we go remote learning? Do I think this hybrid model can work? Sure. I think just about anything can work. But I don't, I can't tell you without a shadow of a doubt, I won't be calling a special board meeting in a week after being in to say, "Yeah, so we can't make this work." I can't guarantee that. I don't know. Literally, I don't know. And it's an interesting place to be for me. Usually, I have an answer. Today, I just don't. So, that's what a hybrid model would look like in RSU four. Yes? What's that? I did unchair my screen. I don't know what's happening there. Yeah, we're off. I don't know why that's still up there. It may be frozen.
So I have a couple of questions. The first one that I have is the talk of mask breaks. And what does that look like for students, given their developmental ages? So pre-K through fifth grade, if, what's that one look like? And then what will it look like in middle school and preschool?
Sure. Kathy, you want to take that one?
Yeah. So I met with Dr. Shaw last week, and we talked a lot about mask breaks. So ultimately, teachers are encouraged. I mean, we live in Maine. If we go outside and have mask breaks outside, that's the most encouraged method. So, having class outside or just going out and getting a breath of air is fine. So ultimately, they would like for everyone to be six feet apart. In a classroom, if the child is reading or doing an assignment at their desk, half the class can take their mask off, so every other. And they recommend ten to fifteen minutes maximum. So by us doing every other, the particles are kind of staying in one region and not kind of going back and forth. And then after ten, fifteen minutes, those students would put their mask on, and the other student, the other half, could do that. Once you remember, in a hybrid model, our class sizes could range from six to thirteen in a pre-K five. So it would be very easy to do half a class. And we're not talking, we can distance them pretty well and then do half. So it would be manageable to be able to have multiple mask breaks. Is that helpful?
Yeah. So then the other question that I have to kind of go along with that is a shortening of the school day. So I find it interesting that we're recommending that potentially shortening the school day for primary and elementary students only thirty to forty-five minutes, and middle school to high school students forty-five to sixty minutes. Honestly, I would think that would be the other way around, given a child's capacity to be able to be in a classroom masked up and to be productive and attentive in school. To me, students who are in middle school and high school have the capacity to do that for longer periods of time as opposed to primary and elementary school students. So I'm just curious as to why those timeframes are such for those people.
You want me to go, or you want to go, Glenn?
Is it really logistical because of busing?
Busing. It's busing. So we kept our, it's logistical and busing. So we kept it. It doesn't mean, Jen, that we don't consider flopping and dismiss the elementary and the primary kids first and have a much shorter academic day and then have the middle school, high school run after. We could explore that if that's how the board chooses. But we tried to keep the bus runs the same. And so as such, the lengthening of the day was more of the high school to then get the students home and then get the elementary home. So, that's how we did it, but we could consider flopping it if that's.
I would recommend that we exploring potentially flopping that. I just know and working as a school counselor with all the age groups that expecting the younger kids to be there longer, there are some benefits, but they're not going to have the capacity to be able to be there for that length of time.
Would that mean that if we did that, that that would put the young students home before the older students are there? So if the older students get the childcare, the younger students would be home alone?
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I'm concerned in knowing that we want it to be successful. I think we would be remiss if we didn't try to look at what potential options there are.
Vicki, you had, oh, okay. Robbie?
With the last thing.
Wait a minute. Can you get the microphone?
Oh, sorry. With the busing, Glenn, what's the average among the kids when you have one a bus? Two per seat, you said?
Okay. Can you, we need a microphone for anybody else that's talking.
Yes, and that would be two students to a seat, given a maximum of forty-six students on a bus.
So that, actually, Robbie, the guidance changed. So it has been physical distancing on the bus. I actually received an embargo copy last night, and it was posted this morning. The framework has changed. They're no longer saying that. All they're saying is, it is not advisable to put a bus to full capacity. Full capacity of a bus is sixty...
So it is sixty-two for high school, middle school, seventy-seven for elementary.
Right. And what we're saying is, two per seat is maximum for us. Yeah.
So what would a morning bus run look like for like cohort A or B? Would you try to stay like in the same geographic area as far as cohort A? And then cohort B the next time those buses aren't running all over town every day?
So virtually, the bus runs would end up being the same. So if you take cohort A, let's say there's three hundred students that we got to pick up between the three towns. You could literally have two students per road or whatever to pick up in group A. And then group B, the other two students that live on the same road, we'd be picking them up the other day. So virtually, the bus runs wouldn't change. It'd just be the amount of students that we're picking up. Therefore, it'd be a shorter time. Most of our bus runs now are anywhere from fifty minutes to an hour max on a bus run. So the time would be cut in half, if not even more.
You're never about cohort C, but cohort C could be anywhere?
Right, can be anywhere. That one's going to be my next question. So what about, I lost my train of thought now. Oh, I know what it was. Ventilation in the building. Are we working on moving towards like ventilation for each room?
Yes. So the high school, as you know, is getting brand-new unit events. So that's going to improve that. Middle school and Cary Ricker have air handlers. That's been upgraded. Libby Tozier and Stabs Primary were looking at air purifiers. In fact, I received one quote today, and I'm gathering another one to see which one is our option. Mr. Koffel wants to go with. So, you're looking, and those would be wall-mounted. So that would therefore, the challenges on the pre-K rooms, there is so much stuff, and with the social distancing and everything, we didn't want anything kind of sitting on the floor. So everything would be mounted up on the wall, the bottom of the water.
So, may I just ask a question about the busing? How much distance can we get between those kids? I mean, I know that like three to six feet apart, you're required to wear a mask. But it seems like, I mean, some kids are larger than others, so they are going to be closer together. So if we're not social distancing the children in the bus before they get to school, I just don't see, if they're making such an importance of social distancing the kids when they get to school, why are they not doing that when they're going to school?
Andrea, that's a great question. I don't know. I can't answer it for you. No, that was new guidance that the commissioner kept talking about and then came out today. I wish I had an answer for you. It was the exact same thing I said to Glenn, Scott, and Kathy today. I said, "It's very interesting to me that we're talking about needing social distancing in our buildings, but we're not, we can't pack a bus like we typically do, but we can put a reasonable number on." It's a great question. I don't have an answer for it.
Can we do thermo scanning on the bus?
Yes, Robbie.
How many people are going to be bringing their kids to school?
Yeah.
Kathy?
So right now, on that survey on slide sixteen, it showed that only sixty-four percent are committed, saying yes, they're definitely coming to school. The thirty percent are not sure.
No, I'm talking about transport.
Oh, yes. How many were in a transport?
I can tell you, two per seat. We can transport how many at a time, Glenn?
Yeah, we need a mic. People at home need to be able to hear their responses.
So, if we're going to choose our high school, middle school run, if we're using all twelve buses, we're using forty-six students on a bus, that's five hundred and fifty-two, right? So if we have on our high school, middle school under the five hundred and fifty-two, that means we're within that guideline completely. Anything going, that would be a struggle.
So, about ninety percent said they would use our buses. However, there was quite a few that said, "If you need us to transport to make it easier," then we would. But we still put them as they would be using our buses.
So, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Bob. When would, when would the, from K through twelve, when would they, when would the breakup be? How many little guys would go to school and how many seniors and how would that work?
It would be about half at a time, roughly. I mean, it's not perfect, just depending on needs and families. But if you figure we have about, you know, we have about fourteen hundred students in the district, we would have about seven hundred in at any given time, roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is around the distance needed when you're needed.
Yep.
How that can be taken into account?
Yes. Yep. So what we've done is, we've gone to our cafeterias throughout the district. Yeah, we've set the tables up, free from the park. So our average cafeteria table is six feet. So we'd be putting one student on one end, the other student on the other end, giving that six feet between, free from the distance, either the front or towards the back. So we could roughly put about thirty-eight students to a cafeteria. I know we've got to work together with the administrators on times, so what have you. But based on the numbers in the building, our lunch serves wouldn't change. That time would be the exact same time. We'd have to, like in the high school, we're talking about moving to the gym. For the middle school, we'd go to the top of the stage. Same thing over at Cary Ricker if we needed to.
There's your question. Robbie?
I'm here.
Vicki?
Do you think students are not allowed to have textbooks? Will they be carrying backpacks then?
You want to take that? Or me too?
Yes. So we've been talking with the high school about textbooks would stay at home. And the things that they would need would be part of the Google classroom and such. So they would be lugging around all of their materials, you know, so it wouldn't be a twenty-pound bag. The other piece is, you know, if they're having a red day and a white day, they can only have to bring the materials for that one day close to their entire locker. But we're trying to reduce the amount of students conjugating into the hallways and, you know, being able to keep it clean. So, and if we're having them move, they move with their stuff. Backpacks would be allowed.
We have been moving. So hold on a second. We've been moving for a while to get rid of textbooks and get everything because everybody has a computer. So they could have a textbook on their computer instead of have to carry one around. So if we move farther and farther that way, there's, you know, it's the necessity of having the little bag that's got the computer in it and some paper and some other things that they might need. So there should be less and less of a need for a lot of stuff to be carried around.
So, yeah, some of our textbooks are already digital anyway. They come with a digital component. And we're going to be requiring your teachers to use the Google Classroom from three through twelve. So the material and the things that they need to access will be done electronically. So it will be less that they need to be carrying.
Andrea, did you have a question?
I did, yeah. So, and I know that you had mentioned that, you know, you wanted to prolong the start date of school to either September eighth or September, I mean, at least September eighth, right?
Yes.
I was wondering, have you considered doing remote learning first and then phasing in like an in-house learning model to see how other schools are doing that are starting before us with an in-house model?
That's certainly a choice that we have. What that would mean is, you all would have to decide that we go remote, one hundred percent remote instruction to start. And then we would set a timeline for us to come back and talk about how it's been going around us, and does it make sense to phase into a hybrid model?
Vicki?
Should a family not have internet at test points?
Yep.
How would that be taken care of with its staff?
Norma Jean can address that.
Hey, Vicki. So the Department of Education, the MLTI program, got together and they actually provided the district with various hotspots. So we have those in distance. We're casing them up, making them secure so they are filtered. And they're going to be able to be took out to our library. So we do have that available for families that don't have internet.
In our parent survey, there was over eighty-five percent that they did not have internet issues all the time. And then a couple of them just mentioned that they had internet issues on certain storm days. If you remember, in April, we had a storm day and such. So there was some days that we had struggles with internet, but for eighty-five percent, they had no internet issues.
Go ahead, Vicki.
And Andy, I think you mentioned the reason for starting, what, September fourteenth, was it?
September eighth, at least.
Was because the staff and all needed the time to get all these new protocols in place. So if you did remote learning before you opened up for, say, the hybrid, that would take a lot of their time away.
Right. It would. I mean, we need some time, just from a facility standpoint alone.
Yeah.
Vicki?
My next question. What would the online thing look like? Will there be specific teachers who will teach specifically online learners? And the school teaching teachers? And will they stay with same cohort of online teaching classes?
Sure. Yeah, it's a great question. We've actually been working through that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to look at our student cohorts and how many students are choosing the cohort D RISE program versus the cohort A and B. If I'm a student cohort A and B, our typical instructional model now is kind of like what I call an I-do, we-do, you-do approach. And so on the days that they're in-person, they'll do I-do, we-do together. So they'll see the teacher doing it, they'll do it together. And then the you-do practice component will be done remotely. We also talked about on that Wednesday, having an opportunity to get some interventions, maybe have a class meeting that works on the social, emotional, where cohort A and B get to have a Zoom together so they can physically see each other. So there are, I'm not quite sure in terms of our numbers, that like this staff member's going to do just remote learning. But it would be an opportunity to still provide special ed services remotely. Still provide GT services, so they can have Google Classroom with resources that they can do remotely as well as some other social, like teletherapy. We have a lot of options that we can do that could be in a hybrid model. I think it really just depends on the child and what they're going to need and what that will look like.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Maybe Glenn. What is your procedure for students to do? What is your procedure for students to take one bus and need to take another bus in emergency or a state party or something like that? Will this continue or are we saying you're only allowed to ride your bus all day and two schools?
Very good question. I don't know if I have an answer for that right yet. I know Justin Felton and I need to sit down and have that conversation. Right now, I've been focusing on the numbers coming in and how to safely do that. I haven't come across to the point of figuring out what we're gonna do with the multiple stocks. From my perspective, they wouldn't do that. Either be home or to grandmothers or to daycare or what have you, that would limit that.
Yeah. And, and from my perspective, I, I think we're gonna probably have to go that way. There's just no choice. We, we need to keep same cohorts kids on buses, just like in classrooms, things like that. I mean, we don't have policy that says that. In absence of policy, you know, that would be something that I would do. But Glenn and I have talked about it, you know, we've talked about it some already. You know, from my perspective, we need to keep the same kids on the same bus every day. And I know that's hard. But given, given what we have going on right now, we need to know, A, where all our students are. And B, you know, if you think about if there is a case, contact places. That, that's gonna be, that's gonna be big. The CDC is gonna call us and go, all right, so give us a list of every kid that they were on the bus with. Give us a list. We may not be able to do that if we got kids riding all over the place. It's just tough. Yeah, you're welcome.
Robbie?
In the cohort C, Kathy?
Yeah.
How many kids do you expect in that cohort C?
So it's a small population for cohort C. Administrators are meeting tomorrow to discuss the who, what, who those students would be. Again, we're for criteria. We're looking at a small population, less than five percent.
So would those students be mixed in cohort A and B?
So again, it's gonna be individual to what this child needs, because they might be there for social emotional support, they might be there for special ed services, they, you know, depending on what criteria they meant, they might be a homeless student or whatever. So we would like to have them attached to one cohort. And then on the other days that they would be, would be how they would get their services. So they might go to a special ed room, they might get their social work, they might go to a different room that gets their online learning. So we would try to limit the contact between the two cohorts.
Going back real quick, Robbie, you had asked a question about bus capacity. One of the things that obviously helps us on the second run is a lot of our high school students drive.
Right.
That's a reality. They would still continue to drive. I mean, we, we wouldn't change that practice.
Right. And I, there had been a proposal that I had received, somebody that suggested a possibility as a hybrid being, instead of two days a week in person, that you do cohort A and B for a week at a time. So you would have cohort A would go for one week and then they would distance learn the second week and flip that over. One of the comments they made was, is then we wouldn't have to deep clean on Wednesdays and on the weekends. They go and change the population because we would have them there all week. So reduce that necessity and give them a whole week of in-person instruction and then a whole week. So we're discussing whether going to hybrid. It's also open if there's modifications to what that hybrid might be. So since I did get something from one of the members of the community that made that suggestion, that that might be an alternative hybrid. Just putting it out there for thought this evening, but you know, just for the thought, to know that it was suggested. I did get emails, as you all probably did too, from various people that wanted the kids all day, five days a week. Want it all in there. We know that that, we physically can't do that with the limitations with our facilities. So we don't really have that option at this time. And I have some that wanted all remote because they, they probably will keep theirs and put them in cohort D because they're not sure they're they're safe to come back. So board members, you know, it's kind of like, so this is kind of a discussion about it, but we kind of have to get an idea of are we in support of this plan? Do we need to, are we interested in getting more information about another possibility? It'd be interesting to know whether you have a question about the delayed school dates. So if we delay the school start date to the eighth, I understand that we have some teacher workshop days that we will move ahead of time. But if we go to the fourteenth, are the staff still gonna be into work or because that's what we say we need the time for?
Yes. Yeah, we have, we have working days under the collective bargaining agreements. We'd have staff in doing those kind of things.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. So that was kind of my questions. A lot of mine were already answered, because I was a board rep on the TPT. So I spent last Friday going over this already. It's not perfect. It's not, I guess not what I'd like it to be, but it's the best that I thought we could come up with based upon all the criteria we have. It'd be interesting to kind of get a sense of what you think the right start date would be.
Question. Any of the students that are going to LRTC, now I know that Lewiston has just said that they're starting
Fourteen, yeah.
So clearly we're not keeping kids back from that.
Right. We, we currently have a small issue with the calendar with LRTC that we're working on. I know a meeting's gonna happen and looking at individual student schedules. What's happened across the region is there are six sending schools, school districts, two LRTC. Three or maybe four now, four of those schools have changed their high school schedule to a four by four. I, I can tell you in good conscience, Jen, you and I have talked about this, I'm not in favor of the four by four. And I'm certainly not in favor of moving Oak Hill High School to a four by four. I don't think it's what's right for our kids. I can't speak for any, any, any other school district's kids. I can speak for ours. It would, it would have a huge detriment to some of the programming we have at Oak Hill High School. One being the bar program, which you all have heard about, which has been fantastic. It would effectively end us being able to do the bar program. I, I can't in good conscience do that. And so consequently, we're, I had a conversation with Rob Callahan, who's the director at LRTC this morning. They're, they're willing to get creative, work outside the box and look at individual student schedules. Because the reality is, under the law, we can't, students can't be denied access to, to a technical center. Now, that's a misnomer to some degree because we only get so many slots per program. So some students are in fact denied access to LRTC. However, you know, in our case, we've been pretty good about getting students, as many students possible there. I don't want to hinder that. However, depending on what happens in Lewiston, will depend on what happens with our students that go to LRTC. So we're currently working through that. Marco has done a fabulous job of coordinating some of that. So we'll, we'll see how that plays out.
Dory, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any comments or questions?
Dory, do you have any questions? You're muted currently.
So on the school bus, there will be two children in each seat?
Potentially, yeah. That would be the max.
Okay. Little bit uncomfortable with that. And what is the situation with masks on, mask off in the class? Again, could you please run that by me again?
Sure. Kathy will talk about that.
Yeah. So masks will be on, you know, most of the time. So we will have scheduled mask breaks where half the students can take it off for ten to fifteen minutes and then the second half of students can take it off for ten to fifteen minutes. Teachers will also be encouraged to go outside and at that point, if students are six feet apart, they can take their mask off, as well as they'll have their mask off during snack and lunch times as well.
Of course, yeah.
And your question?
Kind of, yeah. Thank you.
Vicky?
Please, I have another question. If students are taking their masks off, how are we going to instruct them? Will they have landyards or can they put it on to so that it's on their body? If they're outside and they throw it, do we have to supply another one?
So all students in there have a backpack, a cubby or that kind of stuff. So if they're like leaving, you know, or a different place, then they would have it in there. We have to have to go ordering the landyards so that they just, and I think people have seen them, where you just hang them. So you're on or then they're just hanging on their, on their chest to reduce them. Yeah.
And if something happens to one, we have more on hand.
Right. So we, you know, we need to encourage our parents to as much as possible, provide face masks for their students that, yeah, if, you know, if they can put their name on it, that's fine, but they should go home and get washed on a regular basis, you know, and brought back. Because we got a thousand masks. We're gonna have a thousand students in two days in school. So if nobody brings masks and we give them, we can go through a lot of masks in a short period of time. And then we can't meet the criteria and we go just. Yes, Vicky. No, don't be sorry. This is, you gotta ask the questions.
All right. When students are getting off the bus and getting on the bus, how is the piece of learning happening? If you don't want lots of crowds in the hallway, have you thought about that?
Yep. Which one are I?
So in the conversation that we've had, it'd be per classroom. So if you've got eight students, ten students, twelve students, that one class would go out, they would get on the bus. And we've been advised by the state to load the buses back to front. So they would be getting on at that point and then we could dismiss another one. So we keep the crowds in.
Yeah, we'll be saying hand sanitizer stations on each of the bus. Students are required to take some and use it, get in on the bus, and then when they get off the bus.
That's, and, and another piece to that, Vicky, you're talking about dismissal. One of the things that's gonna have to end in our buildings is the congregating crowds of parents outside our offices. It, 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 it just can't happen anymore. So students will, we're working on, we're working on just how we're dismissing students that get picked up. You know, I, I walk into Cary Ricker on any given day or a Sabbath primary, there's fifty parents. And, and I get it, you know, you want to come in and get your kid. I, I totally, I have, I have four of them in my house myself. I love to go into Benton Elementary and stand around with the other parents and have a conversation. We just, we won't be able to do that anymore. It'll be, it'll be a dismissal procedure. Students go out, get walked out. Parents will be in their cars.
So we will be planning to do a virtual open house for every school. So picture the basic SOPs for parents of pickup, drop off. And we plan on doing a day in a life of, so what do the classrooms look like? Meet their child's teacher with the mask off, with the mask on so that they can recognize them. So we'll do that on those first workshop days with our staff and post them for our parents. But all those dismissal procedures are gonna look different per building, just on the structure of how things go for dismissal. But we do plan on creating those videos so that we can be instructional for our parents.
Okay, so.
I, I have another question about loading, okay. Sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Andrea.
I have a question about loading, okay. I have a question about loading the buses from back to front. Does that mean that we're mixing ages depending on when they're being picked up? So we could have like a very young child and an older child sitting together or like, like are they still? What does that look like?
Yep. So the high school, middle school students, based on the numbers, they would be, they would, they ride together anyways. So our high school, middle school run in the morning, that's just a standard run. So the elementary, those students, SPS and LT are tied together because of the transfer bus. So those students, you're not gonna have a high school student with a pre-k. Those are just two completely separate runs. So if we do the dismissal and then if we decide tonight to reverse or, or change, if we do the younger students first or whatever, those students will stay together as well as the older students will stay together as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so other questions from board members? Comments?
If we did remote, if we did remote learning, when would that remote learning take place? Because we've got a lot of kids in daycares, we've got a lot of parents that work. So with, I mean, are teachers going to plan to do that in the morning or are they going to do it when parents get home at night? Or are they going to rely on daycare centers to facilitate instruction for many children?
So I think that
I'm just like.
It's a convoluted answer. There are some daycare providers that are choosing to have a hybrid teacher to support if, on some of those days. But if we were full remote, we would be looking at the instruction in the morning. But we have what's, there's a difference between asynchronous and synchronous. So asynchronous is when our staff are putting lessons in Google Classroom or CSO so students can access it anytime. And synchronous was when students have to be online with their teacher to access their, their class. For our, our younger learners, we tended to do more asynchronous. So we posted the lessons and the parents were accessing them more in the evenings, not even during the school day. So we were very flexible with how we provided the instruction. So once we get to those classes, we would group classes based on do they need it in the morning, afternoon, or evening, if that's what we needed. But we also made some adjustments for individual students. So if we were full remote, we would be contacting parents and figuring that out. We would like to have a structure. Our parents wanted similar platforms, similar structure. So we would start with that and then work with the parents that needed to make those adjustments. So a majority of our students would have time to connect and be on at a certain time and we would adjust for those that needed.
And Kat, and Andrea, just, I think, just to address a little bit more, Kathy, can you talk about when, so cohort A is in, cohort B's not. Cohort B is in asynchronous learning, correct?
Yeah. So they will not be, so other districts, well, would have and ask their students to be linked into a classroom. We're not asking to do that. So we're asking them to do their independent work. But also, when you're looking at that shortened day, we're asking our staff members to have that office hour to make sure they're connecting with the students that are distance learning that day. So that way they can provide feedback on assignments. If I'm a cohort B and I am distant learning on Monday, I would then know that my staff member would be open from one to two if I'm a high school student. And I could get feedback from my staff, from my teacher. I could get my assignment or connect with my teacher and do a Google Hangout or whatever it needs to be to get the feedback so I know what I need to do on Tuesday. So we're trying to use not only that shortened day, but allowing our staff to connect with our distant owners.
I would hope that, that they all be recorded.
Thank you very much.
At any time. So you, you might have internet connectivity, but you might have three students. They can't all be watching, they're all high school, they can't all be watching the classroom being taught at the same time. So we really have to look at the ability to record each, post them out there and the students watch them when they can. Can we control whether they watch three days worth of classes all in one afternoon, binging, binging Psychology 101? No, we probably can't. The key will be when it comes to assessment time, have they been able to demonstrate that they have the grasp of material that's necessary to continue on? So it really puts the onus on the students and then on the parents as well to track and make sure that their students are doing the work and watching the lessons. So, you know, if we were to go full remote and, and as we are with the hybrid, it's gonna, as we go, every day, every week, there's gonna be some tweaking that's gonna be done to it. We don't have a perfect plan. No one's saying that we have a perfect plan now or exactly, exactly what it's gonna look like on day one, no matter what we do. So the only one we can do that is if everybody was back in. But that's not a possibility.
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Dory.
With the remote and with the kids that will be remote learning on cohort A and B different days, will their food be delivered on the bus?
Yeah.
On the day? Yes.
That's a great question, Dory. I mean, you know, the reality here is if we've got students on, in school, we're running our buses to bring students in and out. So, you know, while I would love to say we'd be able to deliver food like we did when we were in, in full remote learning, we just, we don't have that capacity. We're gonna be lucky to have enough bus drivers to do what we're doing. So we're looking at how do we create So we're looking at how do we create static, you know, being able to, and I know it's hard, you know, parents aren't home, but maybe providing lunches at our buildings, people can come get lunches. I mean, we wanna feed as many people as possible, but infrastructure wise, you know, Glenn and I and Scott talked about it at length. The, the ability to run, I mean, we're gonna be running two runs in the morning, two runs in the afternoon. We're gonna be running a, a run to Lewiston, not, not to mention, you know, anything else in between. To be able to actually run our bus routes all day long to deliver, we just don't, financially, we don't have the, you know, capacity to do that. And infrastructure, we just don't. Um, we don't have the staff to do that.
I think what, what, what didn't mention is that pre-K will be all day instead of half day?
Yeah.
I don't know if they, I think it was on the slide maybe, but it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So our pre-K would either be cohort A and come two days, full days, or cohort B and be two days, Thursday, Friday. So we would not be running our pre-Ks or half days. And they didn't come to school on Wednesdays anyway.
Vicky?
Regarding the lunch, is there a way to send a lunch home? Or lunches on the last day to call for it in the school?
So we, we've talked about that as well, capacity wise. I mean, it, one of the things I don't think anybody saw was our assembly lines. When we did our lunches, I mean, we, we, we filled our cafeterias with bag lunches. We're now gonna have kids in those cafeterias. So, you know, try, and, and I, 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 I hear you. I, listen, I wanna feed anybody we can feed, but the reality is to be just the, just what it takes for resources and manpower to put out that many lunches is, it, we just don't have it and it, it's difficult. No, we, we talked about the same thing. I mean, if I could feed everybody every day, I would, um, because it's just, I know how important it is. Yeah.
It just occurs to me that, you know, we, we went from having everybody in-house to everybody being remote. And now we're looking at trying to meet the needs in person as best as realistically possible. I think that this plan, it's had a lot of hard work. And I think for now, to meet the needs of the student of, you know, two thirds of the population of parents and kids saying, we want our kids back in school, I would wholeheartedly agree with that. It's really important to set that framework, that precedence. I mean, these kids have not been in a school building for as long as we have not met, which is five months in person. And I really think having that face to face, even if it's only a couple of days a week, is so very important. Kids have grown a lot in that timeframe and they need to have an opportunity to be able to establish a new routine with somebody else. Even if teachers are grouping with the students and all, like, there's just so many things that have gone on that I think it's vitally important to have kids, even if they're gonna be in school only two days a week, that they are physically there to get readjusted to that routine in their life. It's huge.
Well, and Jen, you make a great point. You know, we think, we talk about kids and educational stamina, right? And, and to be out of a school, I mean, there's so many things that happen in a school building. You know, not, not just education. If you think about, the reality is we, we've become, public schools have become the largest social service organization on the planet. They just have, good, bad, or indifferent, we've had to. We, we, we adapt to meet the needs of our kids. So the things that go on in the building that are out, that are all education, right? I mean, getting school counseling is education. Uh, getting, you know, seeing the school nurse is education. Walking through the hallways is education, but there is a stamina that goes into that. And right now, you know, I, the idea, I, I, I'll be candid. I mean, we can't bring them in regardless, but the thought of all of a sudden, all of them, I, having the stamina is really difficult. I look at my own children. I mean, I, I've got, in my house, I have fourteen, uh, twelve, eleven, and seven. My twelve-year-old and eleven-year-old are used to going to bed at ten o'clock at night and getting up at ten o'clock in the morning. I mean, it is a struggle. I woke, woke them up at seven this morning. You would have thought I had taken away their phones, their lap, you know, whatever it was. So, you know, there's, there's gonna be an adjustment period to this. There's no question about it.
Okay, so I guess we can do it under the motion. Uh, we'll, we could open it up and let them, and get comments from the public. But then when we get to the motion, we're gonna have to move to just what it's gonna be. Is it gonna be this high, and what day is it gonna start? All right, so that can come under the motion. The motion can be amended if people aren't in it, uh, and don't agree with it. And then we'll, we'll go on from there. Then it becomes a board issue at that point. So at this time, if the board members have no more questions or comments now, this isn't keeping you for asking. You can certainly do it under the motion too. I'd like to open it up for the community members. When a community member speaks, have you raised your hand or put in chat? We'll, we'll acknowledge you, but I would like for you, for the sake of our minutes, for you to identify yourself and which town you're a resident of. So that we have that information. This is all being recorded so that we will have it for the necessary minutes keeping purposes. So at this time, the superintendent will look for raised hands or chat message and call upon you.
Yeah, if, so if you, you would like to speak, please, uh, hit the raise hand button and, uh, I will call on you. So the first one I see is April. April, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm just, uh, wondering, I drive bus. So why can't we do thermal scanning on the buses before the kids even get to the school? Because if they're not, then we're getting exposed and all the kids on the bus are getting exposed.
So, so April's asked, why can't we do thermal scanning on the buses? The thermal scanning cameras cannot mount to buses. Um, they require a black box. We also aren't allowed under federal law to, to put anything extra on buses that isn't supposed to be there. So I hear you. I thought about that as well, April. Uh, you know, how could we put those cameras on there? But there, it's just not possible. Okay.
Okay.
Mrs. Camery. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Nicole Camery, uh, teacher at Oak Hill High School, but also RSU 4EA president. And, uh, I just wanted to start off by thanking everyone, um, and recognizing everyone who, um, was involved in creating these plans. It was a lot of work. People volunteered their time and expertise, uh, to work on this special district project. And, um, they did it to help the community move forward. And, um, I know that Andy and Kathy worked really, really hard, uh, this summer, countless hours, putting this, uh, stuff together. And, um, we really appreciate it. I also understand that this is very stressful for parents and for teachers and for students. And we all have the same goal. We, we wanna get back to school, um, as soon as we can. But it has to be as safely as possible and that's really what I wanted to talk about, um, with regards to the hybrid plan. So some of the concerns I have, um, have to do with, uh, what, what has been talked about already, um, even by Superintendent Carlton, i- is that some of these safety measures have not yet been in place. They're not yet in place. Like plexiglass in the offices, plexiglass in the classrooms. Some of this equipment is still on order. Signage is still on order. And to use Mr. Carlton's words, it might come down to the wire if, if we open on September eighth with a hybrid plan. I'm very concerned as with, uh, Andrea and Dory with the bus situation. This is news to me because we, Mr. Carlton and Kathy and I met, um, yesterday with regards to the busing. And, um, so it went from three feet, uh, of distancing with masks on to now two students per bu- per seat. And that is concerning for, for us. I think that, um, it, it's kind of, um, hypocritical or it's, it's contradictory, I would say, with what the state is asking us to do in the classrooms versus what they're allowing us to do on buses. So I would highlight that, uh, just because the state says that we can do it, it, I, I would ask the board, does that mean we should do it? Two, two people per seat? Also with regards to busing, uh, we don't have any bus aids to help bus drivers maintain safety, uh, on the bus. Bus drivers' number one job is to transport kids safely. This is added responsibility to make sure that kids are wearing their masks, they're, they're loading properly, they're unloading properly, they're not touching each other. We need people, um, on the bus to help with that. And, and I know that, uh, or Mr. Carlton and I spoke about the possibility of, of hiring bus aids, but we don't have them yet, I, uh, is, is my point. We only have four nurses for five school buildings. And, and that one school building that doesn't have a nurse, that added stress and responsibility gets placed on our secretaries. And this is a very stressful time for our secretaries. So I need to make sure that I speak up and voice, um, their concerns, uh, as well. Wednesdays in a hybrid model would be, uh, virtual for everyone except staff members. Which, if we really worry about staff member health and safety, we've proven in the spring that we can teach virtually. And Wednesdays, in our opinion, should be used for deep cleaning in order to separate those, those cohorts, uh, even more. So that's another, uh, concern of ours. We're concerned overall about the risk versus reward with the hybrid model. I agree with Jen that kids wanna, it, it is very important that kids get back to the classroom. But at the high school and middle school, we're gonna see our kids one hour a week. And, and all of these bodies are gonna be in the building. So I'm wondering, is, is the educational, um, practice gonna be that much better in a hybrid model than it would be in a remote model? With, with that added risk to our communities? Now, I'm not asking the board to vote against a hybrid model. We need a way to ease back into, um, school. We need to get our kids back to, to school. We need to, to get back to work as, as much as we can, um, or as quickly as we can. But it has to be done as safely as possible. And, and the concern from the association is that we're, the, currently, tonight, the board is, I'm, I'm sorry, the district is not prepared with all of those safety measures in place, um, all of those things that I listed. So I would hate for the board to vote for a hybrid plan tonight and come September eighth. We didn't get our PPE orders in. We didn't get our, like, our, our, you know, our thermometer, you know, temperature checkers in. We don't have those things in place. So I, I need to voice that from the association that health and safety has to be the number one concern. And busing is one of those big pieces. And the hybrid plan relies heavily on two students per seat. And, and I think that that's a big concern. So, um, I just, I, I would like, implore the, the board to consider, um, that the vote tonight, uh, means that, you know, it, it's a, it's a crucial vote tonight. Whereas if we were to vote for, um, remote, we can always go to hybrid when we're ready. But as of tonight, the buildings aren't ready. So I just wanted to, um, voice those concerns. And I wanna thank everybody. Kathy and Andy have really done an, an awesome job putting all of this work together and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Next, next comment.
All right, uh, Mr. Bailey.
Yep. Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if this can be a question or not, but I think it goes well with what we just heard. Hopefully everybody can hear me.
We can.
We can.
Thank you. Um, so it seems to me like the biggest outcome of the spring, and maybe it's disputed by who was just speaking, that the children didn't really learn as much as they would in school. I think that probably goes without saying, but how well, how well did they learn? So the question I posted in the, uh, the YouTube chat was, what are the significant changes that have been done to the remote learning plan to improve on that? Because it seems to me like as much as we're gonna try to send the kids back to school, there's gonna be a disruption and we're gonna be short of staff and we're just gonna be forced back into remote learning. So that's, that's my biggest question really is, is what, what are the most significant changes to improve on that?
So before I, I let Kathy talk about that, 'cause that's her area. Let me first remind people, or probably it might be the first time they, they know it. When we first went to remote, we really couldn't teach anything new. We had to just reinforce what already been taught because of statutory and, and, uh, title, title requirements. So until we could figure out a way that we could teach all of our students, uh, new material remotely, we couldn't do that. So that delayed it to start with. Now Kathy can talk about what changes are envisioned if we were to go remote that would provide for a more robust educational experience.
So since our spring, um, we have looked, uh, closely at our attendance and engagement and also our grading practices. So I think grading for us is really about giving kids feedback on their performance. And for our pre-K five students, we didn't really give any grades. We stopped giving grades. Um, for six through eight, uh, they were in a similar situation. And high school was pass and incomplete. So it really is, it's an all or nothing. So it's not really like we were giving great feedback to students about the progress. As Mr. English had alluded to, we kinda did two weeks of, um, maintenance or skilled maintenance, um, on our learning. Then we did some new learning and then we did some skill maintenance again. So there was a transition where now it's gonna be all new learning. We have learned that we can leverage some of our platforms that we've already used. Our students already know how to use those platforms, so we can actually do assessments and grading and feedback in those, um, programs. So some of our things that we normally do, um, that we kinda had to employ for everybody, that will be how we start in the fall. So all students will use CSO from grade three K five and three through twelve, we use Google Classroom as well. So students can access the material, get their feedback. And I heard from, in my ad hoc committees, it was pretty clear that our teachers really like those platforms to give feedback because students were actually reading it and responding versus getting a English paper and not looking at the comments for days. So there are some things that we learned. We leveraged some of our platforms. And we are definitely looking at getting those practices, um, stronger.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Megan, if you would unmute yourself, you're good to go. Megan, are you there? Uh, I guess not. All right, uh, next is, uh, Mr. Disjardins. Nope. Guy, we can't hear you. He's connecting to audio. There we go. All right, are you there? No, can't hear him.
We can't hear you. We'll try and get back to you.
Okay, April.
Adaptations to the schools?
Hold on one second. We gotta get you turned up.
Go ahead.
Can we, there's other places that have made adaptations to the buses to put plexiglass around like bus drivers? So is some of that federal money that you guys are getting, is that gonna go to buses protections? Especially since we're raising the numbers of the students being on the buses?
That's April.
Hi, hi. Um, so no, so we looked at, uh, putting the plexiglass around, uh, the, the bus drivers. Some of the concerns with that is, is, I think, there's a confined, uh, regulation on the bus. So if a bus is in an accident, depending on how that accident is, uh, the bus driver could actually be. the bus driver could actually be confined and/or pinned in that bus. So we didn't want to look at that as a Bible option, because for the safety of the bus driver. Another thing is, that has to be signed off by the state police, the same ones that do buses. So our concern there is to, it's subject to opinions. So if it's not installed right, you can't use the bus until it's installed correctly and the state police sign off on it, which I think it's a great thing. But overall, our concern was is, if that bus was in a particular situation and in an accident, depending on what that accident is, the driver themselves could be confined because of the plexiglass in there, and wouldn't allow them to get out of the bus safely, and therefore assist the students getting off the bus as they would be if they would.
So what kind of safety measures are you guys offering for the buses and the students that are on? Because 26 students, or whatever, two per seat, that is not even three feet. And like, I'm just looking like, if the kids get to the school, and then they're thermally scanned, like, great, you guys at school are great, but the kids are already all exposed. Those, however many that are on our bus, plus the driver. So like, we as a district need to all be, you know, protected. The kids, the bus drivers, teachers, everybody. So I'm just trying to see, like, what is... What are we doing all around for everybody?
Yep, so that's where the district's PPE comes in. So we purchase shields, we purchased two different types of masks. They are going to be mandated for students as well as the driver, understanding that the shield and night driving may not be the best, but we are providing that as an option for the driver to wear. So there is hand sanitizer on the bus. I do have a unit that we'll go over when we have our meeting at the beginning of the year on how the drivers can disinfect the bus when they clean it. And the students are going to be required to use the hand sanitizer when they get on the bus, and they're going to be required to use the hand sanitizer off the bus. Understanding that number of the 46 is maximum. I think when we get into our bus runs, and depending on what the plan that's decided on today, parents who have said they may take transportation, may decide not to. So those numbers are not solid numbers, meaning they could flex it. There could be some that may decide to. We just don't know that yet. But we can say that the maximum number of students that will be on a bus, which is less capacity than what we normally do, would be no more than 46.
So there will be no, so there will be no bus passes for kids to go other places? And yeah, so the 46 students, or whatever, if somebody, like, yeah. I'm just trying to get an idea, but thank you, Glenn, I know we will talk more.
Okay, so.
All right, back to Mr. Justjardens. Guy, do you have your audio now?
I hope so.
You do, you're there.
Thank you. And I want to thank April, she covered a lot of the questions that I have. This is Guy Justjardens, and I'm a bus driver. And I do want to thank the committee, the school committee, Glenn, everybody that's put in an awful lot of time here in the past, since last March, I guess. My question, a lot of it was covered by April, but I have a couple of questions as far as the drivers. Knowing now that our maximum is going to be 46, is the driver going to have authority to not take a student on the bus? And I'm thinking more of, this would probably happen to most of us, like, at the middle school where there's so many bus passes. But if you already have 46 passengers on the bus, and you get that 47th student that wants to come on the bus, is the driver going to have the authority to refuse that student on the bus?
So these types of procedural things on how the bus will be owned is a little bit deeper into things than the overall plan, whether it's a hybrid plan, whether it's two days a week or so, which is really discussion as far as whether a 47th student who has not been identified to be on a bus is allowed to get there or not. That'll be something that would be dealt with probably before the run start, but would be part of the bus drivers working with Glenn and the superintendent to come up with those things. So I think that those types of questions about specifics like that probably need to be addressed at a different level and not in this particular form.
Yeah, and those are one of the things that drivers would probably get themselves in a bind with administration when it happens on the spot. So I hope that when we do have our meeting at the beginning, Glenn, that's at the beginning of the year, that'd be one of my questions that we would ask, because we really need to know that upfront. My other question is, and again, I'm really concerned about that number 46. I think 26 is too much, but my question is this, Glenn, I think we talked about this during the ad hoc committee. If the student is screened and is diagnosed with this virus that was on, let's just use my bus, for instance, I'm sure you're going to need all the names of the students that were on the bus. They may need to be quarantined. If the driver has to be quarantined for 14 days, are we going to be, or it could be a teacher, it could be anybody, any school employee, are we going to be required to file some sort of stick time for that? Will that come off our earned time? Or are we going to go with L. Pay for 14 days? And you know, we've got to be...
Yeah, but now it's open to the community for discussion, like questions. So my hand is raised.
Guys, we will address... Yeah, guys, those are questions we'll address, the procedural stuff as far as employees are concerned. Certainly, if you want to get in touch with Glenn and myself, we can talk about that.
Well, yeah, and we could wait for the meeting, too. I mean, that's, I guess my own concern was just 46 is way too many for a bus. It just is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next is Crystal's iPhone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am the mother of a special ed student. I'm Tegan's mom, I'm sure you all know who he is. My concern is, I think I heard you talking about cohort C, where some students will be doing all in-school learning because they classify as somebody who needs to be. How are you choosing who gets to do all in-school learning?
So Kathy mentioned a couple of times that they have four criteria that they're going to use a bunch of administrators. It probably is not, not wise for those four criteria to be out, because they could be used to identify students, which is against the law. And so...
Oh, okay, so you can't tell us what the criteria is, is what you're saying?
I think if you need to know that, that that would have to be a personal conversation with you and maybe Nancy or Kathy. And not out here, just because we would like to protect the confidentiality. We never mention who special ed students are, or who any student is that is getting...
Right, and honestly, I appreciate that, and I'm sorry, I'm the mother, so I didn't think that applied to, like, me talking about it. Okay. My other question is, if you do the hybrid model, I also think I heard you say something about trying to keep siblings on the same... That the same cohort, I guess?
Yes, that would be, so if there's more than one student in a household, we would try and put them both in the same cohort A or cohort D, so that every student in that household goes to school on the same day and is doing distant learning on the same day.
Okay. All right, that's all, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, Megan. Your hand is raised. All right, I have an iPhone.
Yes, is that me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Matt, I live in Wales. I have a daughter that's going into kindergarten this year. One of the things that I just, I'm concerned about is that the repercussions, the long-term repercussions of a hybrid or a distance learning will have on our children in the long term. Even the CDC's own website has a published item on there regarding in-school learning and the benefits in terms of social interaction, team building, you know, depression, thoughts of suicide, things like that. And I just want to make sure that things like that are being considered when the vote on these options or possibilities.
I think you're, you have...
That isn't being discovered. Reading the 64% of parents that would like their kids to go to school full-time, and why that 64% can't do full-time, and the rest that are either on the fence or prefer distance learning, but have that option. Thank you very much.
All right, so all those things are considered. They were a big discussion during the CPT. For people who wanted the remote, it was kind of... The big discussion was that we really needed to get the students in. They needed that social interaction and become part of the team. The staff needed to develop a rapport with them and to be able to see them. And for the safety of the students, in some respects, it's better for them to be able to come into school and we can see them than for us not to be able to see them. So who knows? Maybe after the board makes a decision, if it's a decision on a hybrid, we might have 75% of the students pick out to go remote, in which case, the numbers that'll be left will be enough that they can go four days. We'll have to change everything. But it's not... Even if 64% is more than we can physically accommodate in our facilities, because that might be more than 64% of the students. So that's, you know, we... That's kind of what, that's kind of where it's at. We're going to have to come up with the best for those who want to opt out and do remote learning, or homeschooling, if that's their choice. That'll be their option. That allows us to adjust the numbers that we're going to have on the bus runs and the numbers in the classes, and we'll take a look at what the end result is. But we are concerned about the long-term impact that would have with students not being in school. That's why we, you know, we're recommending the recommended in a hybrid model. It gets them in school some. There are some places in the world where students have received their education for their entire life via remote learning techniques, and they have developed, but that's unusual, and it's not necessary, and we shouldn't have to do it here. We just have to do it for this period of time. So we're going to do our best to get everybody back when we can, so that's what we want to do.
All right, next, Kelly Heath.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My question relates to restrictions on travel. I know at my job, where if we leave the state, we either have to have a negative test to come back to work, or we have to be quarantined for two weeks. So my concern is just during vacations, you know, where families are going out of state and, you know, bringing COVID back with them. So are there going to be rules around that?
And I think that, I think the executive orders are out there. They say that anybody that travels out to the state and goes to a state with an unacceptable level of COVID-19 must self-quarantine or get tested to negative on the return. So if they have to self-quarantine until they get a test, then they wouldn't be able to come to school. We won't know, as a school unit necessarily, that they have gone out of state. You know, if somebody gets in a car on the weekend and drives down to Boston, forgets that their season tickets to the Red Sox is no good, and comes back up, but doesn't self-quarantine or get a test, we won't know that. So there's thought about it, but there's not a great deal that we are in a position to do anything about if people don't follow the guidelines that are put out there, the executive orders and et cetera, that are out there with the intention of protecting the public.
Hi.
All right. Karen Bailey.
Hi there.
We lost you, Karen.
Hello?
There you are.
Okay, hi. So my big question is this. It's always been very clear with RSU4 where my children need to be, where their goals need to be each year to get to where they want to go. My question is, my seventh grader missed kind of half of 7th grade, the way I see it. And yes, she did the remote learning and stuff, but there wasn't a lot of new material there. Does she start 8th grade where they left off in 7th grade? Or are they just starting with 8th grade material? And then, I mean, where on this spiral of spiralized learning? Where do we start?
I'll let Kathy answer that.
Okay.
We haven't done our formal assessments since before March 13th. And so when we get our students, we will formally assess our students and meet them where they are at. And then our teachers, again, in June, on those PD days, determined the essential standards that students need to have learned in each grade level. And we'll be focusing on those standards first. And so we will identify where the students are and make a plan to make sure that they are meeting the standards on those.
Okay, iPhone.
Okay, I think that's me.
That is you.
This is Stephanie. I have a student that goes, well, I have two students that go to us about its primary. One of the main concerns for us for last year for remote learning was that daycares do not have access to Wi-Fi. And many students go to Ms. Gail's preschool, and there's no Wi-Fi, and my children will be going there. And I'm just wondering what there is to access for internet so that our students can have access to this, because it's going to be a major concern if we're set up like we were last year with working parents sending their kids to daycare.
Do you expect that your students or your children will take their laptops to daycare?
Yeah, so my daughter has an iPad. Both kids have iPads, and we're just wondering how to get the internet to daycare so that they can complete assignments at daycare, because currently, there's no Wi-Fi, so there's no internet available at the daycare.
Okay, so I'll let our tech director, Norm Dean, answer that.
Yeah, so as far as the location, it's just like a home, it doesn't have a Wi-Fi, so we'll follow the same process as kids being at home without Wi-Fi. And so we do have hotspots available for that, and we evaluate those.
Right, so provide a hotspot there, you know, it's a kind of a tricky one when we do it for a business, instead of a home, and that the business can now say, we got internet connectivity and being paid for by not their expense. So it would be something that you look at, but we do have the capability of putting some hotspots out there to provide internet connectivity where there isn't any currently.
Okay.
Not anybody could access the hotspot, they have to be an identified machine, I believe, so that they couldn't use their own devices to get on, or if you pour the bikes.
All right, Evan Russell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two kiddos going. One's going into 5th grade, and one is going to be going into kindergarten. And I wanted to know how they're going to be graded with the remote learning. I know that back in March, it was pretty laid back. I don't know, I want to know how it's going to be this time, and what expectations are the teachers going to have, most especially for my kindergartner? What is he gonna... I don't know if he's going to be able to focus on an iPad doing the remote learning, and I just want to know what expectations he's going to have in order to, you know, move on to 1st grade.
I'd be like Kathy Martin, the director of curriculum.
So all pre-K12 students will go to our 1 through 4... So all pre-K twelve students will go to our one through four grading model that we had pre-COVID before March thirteenth. And again, we'll be looking at those standards and focusing on those. That does not mean that all assignments will be on the iPad. The students will access their assignments on the iPad. They might be able to do something, so like a project-based. They might have to make letters with leaves or it might be all kinds of projects and hands-on learning that they do. They might take a picture or make a video and send it back to their teacher. So not everything will be exactly attached to online, especially for our younger learners. But that's how they would access and communicate with their teachers.
Okay, thank you.
All grades would be going into Junpro. So if parents want to access, they would see, so pre-K five, they could get communication through CSOW. As a parent three through twelve, you can be invited to your child's Google classroom and see all those communications and feedback and be part of that loop, as well as you can see your Junpro. We'll see all your child's grades on all the standards.
Okay.
Woody Bailey.
Thank you. Hopefully this make this quick. So personally, my daughter's first interest is she just wanted to go back to school. And I'm sure that's largely the majority of this, particularly the sixty-four percent. When will we find out after this meeting what the plan is, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's a back-to-school, whether it's just be remote? And I got to assume that some of us will change our minds on which option we want. It sounded like at the beginning, you talked about a homeschool option that is slightly different than a remote learning option that I think you said the remote learning was with like an hour or something with the teacher. And I just, one other thought is, I know at least my daughter, I think a lot of probably a lot of other kids, school is about socializing. And if a group of kids learn what's gonna what the plan is, if they can kind of cluster together and kind of choose the same plan, just some thoughts on that.
All right, so your first part of your question is, hopefully you will know by the end of this meeting what the plan is going to be, how what we are anticipating the first day of school will be and what it will be like. So that's the goal that'll come out of our next item of business. However, there will, there are some other things that need to be taken care of. And there is a significant difference between homeschooling and remote learning. And I don't think remote learning restricts you to an hour a week of class time. It gives you class time five days a week. And opportunities to meet with your teacher remotely. So but there's some other questions that have not been asked yet, which I think you might have alluded to, and that is, when will you know which cohort your student is assigned to? And perhaps who their teacher is? Those types of things. Those are all being worked on, but I'll let the superintendent give you a better answer than I can.
So so Kathy and I, depending on the outcome of tonight, Kathy and I have scheduled a Zoom on Friday at eleven o'clock with the community that will be recorded and will answer any of those questions that we can at that time. So, you know, when are your kids going to know their cohort? When are the bus runs going to come out? Those those kind of things. That's that's our plan is to answer those questions then on Friday. Tonight's more about getting the framework by which we're going back. Carol.
Hello, Carol from Sabato. So just had a quick question, actually. I know in the spring, it was hard to keep track of everything with one in middle school, one in high school. Is there a way that we can actually have access to emails also? So when they get an assignment, we can see what's going on. When they get a reply, we can see what's going on. Because that's the toughest thing I had, especially with a high schooler.
So again, everything is done in Google Classroom. And as a parent, you can be invited to be part of that class, which means you'd also see the emails. It is all about the notifications and the settings that you put of how much notifications and information you want to get between the student and the teacher. So we will do some parent webinars about how to access Google Classroom as a parent and what notifications are helpful and which ones can become a nuisance of getting a hundred emails in a day.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jennifer.
Hi, we live in Litchfield and I was just wondering how the whole schedule is going to affect the juniors and seniors with LRTC.
So so we're working on the scheduling with LRTC right now. Like I alluded to before, there's been a struggle to some degree with the regional calendar. So we're working on that. I know Mr. Aliberty has been in constant contact with them. I can't answer it today, but we're hoping to have an answer soon about how that's going to work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Deb. We can't hear you, Deb.
There, is that better?
Nope. You're muted again. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I have two questions. One is dealing with the alternative school program. I haven't heard anything about that mentioned. And the other question I have is if we're doing part-time going to school and part-time remote learning, how does that affect our sports? Getting kids to and from practice and.
You want me, you want me to start?
You can do the alternative.
All right, so Kathy will take alternative and I'll take sports.
So for alternative ed, it would be different that students would be picked in cohort A and B and they already have learning plans and already their assignments are already project-based. And so they wouldn't just be able to access their teacher to get their instruction on those cohort day on cohort A or B days and then do distant learning. That's not to say that a student wouldn't qualify for the cohort C, but we are currently looking at them to either be in A or B.
So as far as sports are concerned, Deb, we have, we don't know what's going to happen with sports yet. The MPA has come out and said what's going to happen. I know there's a statewide A D's meeting, I think tomorrow maybe. So until until we actually know they're going to be fall sports, I I can't tell you what that's going to look like.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Katie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for all your hard work, all the planning that went into this. It seems to me that we're voting tonight on the hybrid or the pure virtual model. And the hybrid definitely gives a lot of we can mold the model as we go. My question is for the RISE program under the hybrid model. Can you speak a little bit more to that? To that process? Would the teachers be solely doing the online learning? Or would they still be managing a classroom?
So we don't know exactly who's going to be teaching that currently. I am working with a bunch of other districts to put students in cohorts as well, to make sure our capacity is okay. It just depends on how many students we have. So we're not going to say Mrs. Barnes is a RISE teacher. But we we might be able to do that depending on our numbers. So it is not going to be like a placement, like a regular, if you're cohort A, B, to get a specific assigned teacher. But you would end up with a regular one. We're just not sure who that would be. We are looking to do pods like pre-K two and give project-based assignments. But you would also have access to our regular curriculum materials.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we got more questions. We've got some chats, so we'll look at the chats and see what the comments are in the chatter chat room.
Some of these, a good portion of these have been answered already. So the first one is, will students be assigned to cohorts or will parents be able to pick which one? I can answer that. We will be assigning cohorts based upon a bunch of different things. Parents will have the choice of choosing cohort D if they so choose. And then virtual schooling, will it, has anyone said what virtual schooling will look like? Will it follow the actual classroom model with teachers appearing in front of the class for each class?
It's going to depend on the grade level. So for pre-K five, they don't necessarily have periods. But for like a high school, we did find it successful to have the different periods where students would either access or be working on their assignments during that that timeframe. So it just depends on what age your learner is.
Okay, I guess the other ones have been answered that as they came in.
So there was one more.
One more?
That just came in. Just a thought, pushing out to the four teams will also help us get through the two-week period after a major holiday weekend.
So I thought people ending summer, coming back into town two weeks after. What is the seventh, Monday the seventh? Yeah, I think it's the seventh. So taking the fourteen to seven days instead of going back on the eighth. Or the Friday before, and then everybody takes off again. So are there any more in the community that need to raise their hand? I shouldn't say need, but want to raise their hand now? I've got a couple of chats that just came in. Okay, we got a couple of new chats.
And I also have a comment. I'm not on Zoom. I had to call in because my internet went out today, right in the middle of the meeting. So you can let me know when it's a good time to be.
Go ahead.
Go ahead now.
So my name is my my name is Kristy Wlett. I'm from Litchfield. I have a kindergarten student at Libitopia and a third grader going to be Carrie Ricker. And I have two questions. My first question is, has there been any consideration around outdoor classrooms? And using care funding to be able to create safe outdoor classrooms where students could be distant?
So so one of the things that we've talked about with staff is the ability to take kids outside. You know, we don't, we aren't set up for outdoor classrooms per se, but we we are encouraging staff to get outside with kids. You know, it's depending on the weather, of course.
And your second question?
Great, thank you. And my second question, thank you. My second question is around the hybrid model. Kathy, I think you alluded to it a little bit in terms of will it, when they are not in school, will it be synchronous or asynchronous?
Yeah, so again, I think it's going to depend on the grade level of your learner. But I I think there's going to be a combination. So I, you know, we're thinking maybe on Wednesday that there might be some synchronous where you could have a social emotional Zoom meeting where cohort A and B get together. There might be times where your child actually is connected to an ed tech for RTI. Or they might have a Zoom for a GT class. So it really depends on your own particular child, if they will have a synchronous class or not. But in general, if you are cohort A on Monday and Tuesday, you will not know, you will have asynchronous learning on Thursday, Friday. It would be unless it was a particular content area that you would be on eating to synchronous. So we are really shooting for asynchronous on Thursday, Friday, and maybe one or two on Wednesday.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, let's see. Will with remote learning, will there still be vacation weeks? Yes, there will.
Yeah, still vacation weeks.
I kept my daughter back a year. My fear is she still won't be able to caught up with a hybrid. What will it look like for kids of mine who are struggling and have an IEP in place? So I can answer that. IEP services will be had. You know, we have a legal requirement to provide those. We will continue to provide those. Let's see, as a parent that works eight AM to five PM and doesn't get home from work until five thirty, will we have the option to complete assignments in the evening? My daughter will be attending daycare and they made it clear they are not teachers and it isn't their job to make sure classwork is done.
Yeah, so no assignment. Again, you would be working with the teacher. And it sounds like it would be daycare, so it would be a younger learner. They're not going to have assignments that I do every day. They might have to do. You have a couple of days to do them. So if I'm cohort A, for example, having class A Monday and Tuesday, I get assignments for my Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They would be due Monday. So you have flexibility as a family to get done, but you would also have time to check in with the teachers on particular office hours as well.
With remote learning, would there still be snow days? That's a very good question. I'd like to say no. We're waiting on some guidance from that for the state. So part of part of what makes a student day is a lunch in three hours.
Not if it's all remote.
Well, not if it's all remote, right? But it, you know, depending on if if we're all remote. If we're all remote, then if we can deliver a lunch, you know, they just, it really depends on.
Don't even need to do that. If you're all remote, you're not delivering lunches. We haven't discussed that. We probably will try, but that's not a criteria for remote.
Okay. Wednesdays, we're hoping for snow days on them.
Okay, so we we have no more input incoming in from the community. Are there any follow-up questions or comments from board members before we move to the next? Okay, seeing that. I want to thank everybody in the community for listening to the presentation. There was a lot of good questions. I hope we were able to answer all of them. We probably couldn't answer them all satisfactorily the way you wanted them, but you got answers that will give you more information in order to base your decisions. So at this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the return to school plan presented by the administration.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, Joan Joe. Discussion. Okay, so I would like that to have an amendment to give us a start date. Robbie.
Yeah, I would say portion from staff fourteen, and that would give us a little bit more time.
So you're amended to start on the fourteen? Then we have discussion on it. Is there a second to that amendment?
No, wait a minute. The next one, it says to approve a change to the 2020-21 school calendar. Wouldn't that take in the beginning of school?
It could, but if we put it all in the plan, it's in the plan. I guess I didn't see the next one. I was just trying to get it all in. As I had mentioned earlier, that we had the plan, we'd also come up with a date. So I don't, there's probably other changes to the school calendar that's going to be driven than just the start date of the school. There's going to be teacher workshop dates and things like that on the calendar that also are going to get modified as a result.
I actually like the idea of starting two weeks after the holiday weekend because it gives people who are coming back from out of state that two weeks. Is that the fourteenth? I'm sorry, that's one week, right?
That would be the twenty-first.
It'd be the twenty-first.
It would be two weeks.
Yeah, the twenty-first would be two weeks. It kind of gets us out of sync, but I hear what you're saying. This is the session under an amendment to make the start date the fourteenth. Other comments?
Can I can I ask a clarifying question, Bob? So so in this motion, are we? This is a motion to approve the hybrid plan, correct?
The plan presented by administration.
Is the hybrid plan.
Which is the plan you presented.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, with an amendment to start on the fourteen. Any other discussion on the amendment? Can you get closer to me?
Is it safe to assume although something comes up that then the meeting will be called?
Yes, without question. We've already talked about it.
Stephanie?
I have another question and I don't know if it's a year and a half ago or on the calendar, but in a teacher enrollment, I start the special enrollment to get me ready to know what to do with my kid. So I'm a little bit concerned. Have we pushed student date out? Are we pushing in the teacher date?
We are. We have contracted, we have contracted days in the collective bargaining agreement. We would look at the teacher calendar and adjust that accordingly.
Because my calendar didn't do that, but now it's giving me more time to get ready for my.
Right, you got it.
And I think that's easier for us to do with a fourteenth date than a twenty-first date.
Yes.
Any other discussion? So seeing that.
Yeah, I really, sorry, hold on a minute. I really like the the hybrid plan. I think you guys put a lot of thought into it. I'm just so stuck on the transportation of getting this kids to school. I just, I can't get over that part. So is that like a discussion that we have? So is that like a discussion that we have now or like are we passing the hybrid plan and not talking about the transportation and figuring that out later? Because that's a really important part of it.
Right, so right now, right now, we're going to, we're basically just voting on making the motion to add the start date of the 14th. Then when we get to the discussion of the plan, that's when any board member that has further questions or wants to recommend a change to the plan, that that can be done. And we won't have to take each suggestion as an amendment. If people have suggestions to change the plan, we can address those as we go along and then finalize what it will be like in the end, I guess.
Okay, that's cool.
Going to get that all down in discussion.
So we're doing the amendment first.
So we're doing the amendment, so there's no other discussion on moving this, making the motion to read the plan presented by the administration with school start date being on the 14th of September. So all those in favor?
Right.
Hold on, can I?
Wait.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I just want to procedurally make sure I'm good here. So voting on the amendment, you just talked about amending the plan. If you vote on the whole thing, it would approve the plan without.
No, we got to deal with the amendment first. The amendment is just to add.
Yep.
Starting date of the 14th.
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor of adding the starting date to be the 14th of September? Like everybody here, between the three board members?
Andrea?
Uh, yeah, sorry about that, what? I couldn't type my unmute button there for a minute.
So are you in?
I'm sorry, Andy, can you say that again?
Yeah, so we're voting on amendment to, which would add the start date to be the 14th of September. Are you in favor of the start date?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine with me. I see a lot of the parent comments over here saying that they're good with the 14th. So I think that let's go with the 14th.
Okay, Dory? Uh, we lost her. Joan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries.
Okay, so the amendment carries. The amendment carries.
Yeah.
So now let's discuss the administrator's plan, administration's plan as it was presented. So Andrea, this would be a place where you could go and talk about your concerns with the part of the plan that dealt with the busing. It was as they presented it.
We, we talked about it, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, you know, I mean, there were a lot of things brought, brought up about the social distancing, the capacity. We've had a couple bus drivers who have also voiced their concern. We've had, you know, the representative, the representative, the teachers association. So, I mean, I, I share their concern, I really, really do. And I want to make sure that because we have such a high number of students being transported to the school, that we're, we're making that safe, like all aspects of school, you know what I mean? I mean, what's the point of doing all of this work to make school safe in-house? But eh, we're not really going to pay that much attention to how we're getting them there. It just doesn't make sense to me and I, I appreciate all of the work that everybody has done. I mean, I don't think that it's for lack of trying or, or trying to create a plan. I think you guys worked really hard, but I, I don't, I just think there's too many variables for the transportation for me. So that, that's just how I feel. I mean, if we can overcome those, that's great. I think the supplies are also, I think the supplies are also a little, you know, cumbersome and so that's just where I'm at.
Okay, appreciate that. Other comments?
My, my connection just dropped out, but I got it back.
Yeah. So, so the CDC guide, so it depends on which CDC. You've got the National CDC, you've got the Maine CDC. Maine CDC's guidelines are what's in the DOE framework now. And, and basically it is, it's not recommended to fill a bus to its capacity. That's what it is. And so we've kind of looked at, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with anybody that the, the whole idea of we've got a social distance, you know, three feet with masks inside that, I, I, I don't know, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a, you know, I wasn't involved in developing the DOE framework. So I, I don't know where those thought processes come from, but that's currently what's in the DOE for, so.
I guess my question is about so taking a rhythm, so when's the C P hour?
Well, right, we would do that, for sure. Yeah.
Because I'm concerned about that too. I don't know why we're going through all of this, this school, but some of those kids are on the bus from nowhere. And that's, that's among I to be sitting with other kids. And they come to school and now you can't be that close to that child. I, I don't know how some of our little ones, because we're sitting them on the bus, not close, but now it can't be that close to them on the playground or in the school.
Or they're getting on and off the bus at daycare together.
Right.
You know, they're not siblings, but in theory they're spending all their time together. Well, and I, I kind of feel that way about my sons, I mean, you've got to group with five kids. Right. They've been together all summer. Now I'm thinking, so they'll probably be different footmarks if they're coming to the class. But as a parent, I wouldn't have problems to be in close proximity with them. So it's taken them doing that, it's pretty difficult to hold them.
Yeah, I don't know if your mic's turned on or not, but it may be, but right, to the best that we can, we can try and get them grouped, maybe, and maybe those five boys all or students all live together, or maybe they're kind of spaced out and they ride their bikes to get back and forth each other. So it's going to, it's, it's really going to be a difficult task. If we could have only one student per seat, it would take.
It would be impossible.
We couldn't do it, we couldn't do it. We'd have to go remote because we just couldn't, the transportation would be four hours in the morning, four hours in the afternoon. It just.
You'd be all down.
Just, just couldn't make it happen. And that might be part of the rationale, although that's not a good reason for it, but being a rural state, a lot of students ride buses from great distances. And that could force nobody to have in-person learning, even though they didn't have a single case in the county, which is not the case anymore, but that could limit it. But yeah, it's, it's, it is an interesting point. But I think we're going to have the transportation issue. We're going to have to work on that and do the best we can. All of this could change at any time. We get further direction, which case, we're really return, do the plan, go into this hybrid that was presented model, how the transportation's going to work, it's going to have to get worked out, just like many other aspects still. Others, questions, comments? Modifications? I'm not seeing any. Got any on the? Andrea, Dory, Joan?
I am, I am still uncomfortable.
Uncomfortable with which parts of it, Dory?
Sitting two kids next to each other on a full bus. You're asking for trouble.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, I hear you.
And we in Maine have been very fortunate so far. That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate it.
If there was.
It's good input. I hear you. All right? Any other comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Oh, yeah, Robbie?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that no plan that we come up with is going to be perfect. And this plan will only be as strong and as weak as the community wants it to be. So I would hope that we would all grab onto this rope that we really don't have control of and everybody pulls the same way. And I think if we can do that as a community, we'll be a lot better off. And modeling for your kids on how you feel about education and the situations that they're going into at school is a big help for the teachers, the staff, and eventually the community. So let's all get together and do the best we can.
And, and it's a good, a very good comment because a real key to this whole thing is going to be that parental assessment that they're supposed to do every morning before they let that student go out and get on the bus. Did they run a fever? Did they have a cough? No, did they go and visit Aunt Charlie over the weekend or Uncle Charlie over the weekend? Could be the one, I guess, for sure. And who has COVID or something? So, and if those are the case, that they don't send them to school. They don't put them on a bus, they don't expose their, their classmates, they don't expose their teachers, they don't suppose, expose all the community members that would, the tracing would track down. So we have to rely, the staff is going to self-assess each day. We will have that documentation. Parents are going to have to self-assess each day, their students, we will not have documentation. We just have to rely that they did that. We can't do it at the bus. Kindergarten is out there waiting on the bus. Bus driver thinks he got a fever, the kid starts coughing, the bus driver can't just leave, stand aside of the road. There might not be anybody at home, it might be out at the bus stop waiting along with a sibling or the next door neighbor's kid who gets on the bus. So it's really up to the parents to be involved to get it done. So if there's nothing else about the plan, then I will call for the vote. So we'll do a roll call vote because we have the three there. They're online and we'll just go down.
Okay. Jen?
Yeah.
Robbie?
Yeah.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah.
Andrea?
Can I be last? I'm so on the fence. Sorry.
Thanks Andrea, I'm last.
Joan?
Yeah.
All right, Andrea?
All right, yes.
And Dory?
Yes, reluctantly.
Okay, so the motion carries with the amendment.
To start, accept the plan, the hybrid plan is presented, the start date is September 14th.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you for all. I know it's past nine and we can't start any business unless the board approves it. We do have a few things of first reading of policies. So before I ask if somebody wants to make a motion to allow us to continue with business or not, is there anybody that have any real problems with any of these? So we can just let them go and get the first reading next time? All right? Okay, I think there's no committee reports, there's no executive session, no other business before I adjourn the meeting. I want to thank you all. It's not been easy. I know it hasn't been easy with me, I can't expect it was easy for any of you either. So you have the information that you have, community members have it, there's going to be a Zoom meeting for the community on Friday to go and discuss some more things. Communications is a key. Again, thank you and y'all have a great night. Now, without objection, will declare this meeting adjourned.
9:13. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.
If you zoomed in or called in or listened, appreciate it.
Okay, goodbye, everybody.
Good night, Joan.
Good night.
Good night, Dory. Good night, Andrea.